All right, we want to welcome everyone to tonight's school board meeting of the Cedar Rapids Community School District. It's Monday, August 22nd, 2016. Welcome, everyone. And with that, can we have a call to -- or approval of the agenda? Thank you.
I make a motion that the agenda of Monday, August 22nd, 2016 Board of Education meeting be approved as set forth and that each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
That would be the revised agenda.
The revised agenda, okay.
Revised agenda.
Is there a second for the revised agenda?
Second.
And this is a roll call.
Director Jansen.
Aye.
Director Ann Halt.
Aye.
Director Westercamp.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
President Laberty.
Aye. Next we'll turn it over to Dr. Buck for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. The school year -- the new school year begins tomorrow for our students, except for Taylor, of course. They've been in session for, boy, several weeks now. I'm sure there's lots of excited young learners and families. I know we're all looking forward to walking them into our schools and classrooms. This morning, we set the stage for that by bringing all of our employees together at Kingston Stadium for an all-staff kickoff. To say the event was -- went well would be an understatement. The weather was perfect. Is it very perfect? They were out there, actually, with leaf blowers trying to dry off the seats a little bit beforehand, which I thought was a nice touch. And the program began with an awesome combined marching band performance by student musicians from Jefferson, Kennedy, and Washington High Schools. They rocked. We were then inspired and energized by a program led by and featuring an incredible team of our students. Jefferson High School senior Connor Wolf served as our emcee. And Connor first led the band as a drum major, and then he turned around and took the podium and took charge of the event with tremendous polish. And if you had a chance to see him, a couple of people initially thought he was a staff member. He's actually senior Jefferson High School, so it's pretty cool. The speakers each shared their personal narrative related to one aspect of our theory of action. Mauricio Barrios, a fifth grader from Kenwood Leadership Academy, he spoke to leadership, as you might guess. PJ Gorman, a senior at Washington High School, carried his drum off the field with him from playing with the band, placed it behind his chair, and then spoke about student ownership. Afnan Elsheikh, a senior at Kennedy High School, took the lead in sharing her narrative about student achievement. Metro High School student Kune Goodson highlighted innovation. And Celeste Panduro, an eighth grade student at Roosevelt Middle School, brought equity into the spotlight with her personal narrative. I sat among this group of speakers and shared my insights on the culture and climate aspect of the theory of action. And I'd be honest with you, after about three students, I thought, holy smokes, I don't know if I should be up here. Might be out of my weight class. So, our employees also use the opportunity to collect canned goods for the Lynn Community Food Bank. I just wanted to throw one thing out there about Connor, well, a couple of things. One of them, Connor, a few months back, through the Kirkwood Workplace Learning Connection, did a job shadow with me because he thinks he might want to be a superintendent someday. And so, he, when we actually did the job shadow, he was amazing. We went over to Hoover for a building leadership team meeting, and he jumped right into that meeting with the staff. And then we came back here and had a cabinet meeting, and he jumped right into that cabinet meeting, just like he belonged, which was great. So, when we had an opportunity to do this, I reached out to Connor and said, hey, if you're thinking about being a superintendent, how would you like to present in front of about 2,700 people at Kingston Stadium? And he's like, okay. So, it's absolutely amazing. Then one of the, I think, jokes that he made during the event was, he's starting a hashtag because he's going to run for president in 2048, and so there's a, and he's going to invite me to be his vice president. And so, he said, look for hashtag WolfBuck2048. And after we heard these students speak, I think actually a better plan is hashtag WolfPanduro2048, because the students are amazing. But it was a great way to start the day and a great start to the school year, so. As many of you know, Dr. Carlos Grant and Mr. Grant Schultz have now joined the staff at Washington High School on an interim basis as principal and activities director. I'm looking forward to their approval this evening to working with them in these roles. I also want to share that Paul James, former Washington Activities Director, will be providing some support to Mr. Schultz during the school year. And while we continue to search for an executive director for talent management, I'm pleased to share that community leader Rod Dooley has agreed to step in and support us during this school year. So, this allows us to do some recruiting for the position for 2017-18. As many of you would know, Rod has significant HR background, and we are very excited to have him join the team for the school year. There will be lots happening across the district tomorrow with special opening day assemblies and welcome back celebrations. We'll also be holding a ribbon-cutting event at the new Kenwood Leadership Academy Magnet School at 10:00 a.m. And then on Thursday of this week, we'll join the City of Cedar Rapids for the grand opening of the Northwest Neighborhood Center located next to Harrison Elementary School. And you may recall that this replaces the time-check center that was lost in the 2008 flood and will be a wonderful addition to the neighborhood and school community. And if you've been by there, it looks like it's just going to be a beautiful facility for our kids in the community, so.
Terrific. Thank you, Dr. Buck. We appreciate that. Are there any communications from the board? Any member reports, Keith?
The Iowa Association School Board is going to start a campaign in this upcoming year to talk about the positive things that are going on in the state of Iowa. And this is something that was done in another state and received great reception that better educates the community about all the children and what's going in our schools, but on a state level. And they're able to do that because of funding that they are receiving. And so, this is kind of a first in the state of Iowa for something like this. So, we may be getting contacted for spots because they're going to go over the whole state.
That's great. It's good going into the legislative session as well. So, any other reports or comments from the board?
Well, it was exciting, Dr. Buck, you still have the thunder.
In your comments, but it was exciting to be there this morning. Beautiful day, gorgeous, exciting to see all the staff back and the students, and we're all looking forward to those activities as well tomorrow. So, wishing all the staff and the students a great first day of classes. So, with that, we'll go ahead and move into communications, delegations, and petitions. And we have one request to present to the board, and I'll just remind the public that this is a meeting in the public, not a meeting of the public. And so, we will have five minutes for comments to the board. If you had approached the podium and give us your name and your address, we'd appreciate that. If there's any affiliation you have with any organization, you can also let us know that. And Laurel Day, the board secretary, will let you know when your five minutes is complete. So, Craig Sealy, if you would like to approach the podium?
Distinguished school board. My address is, my name is Craigy Sealy Jr., and my address is 3916 Richland Drive Northwest. And if I go too fast, just tell me, I've got a lot of material here. My, I'm retired, but I did teach in almost every building in Cedar Rapids. I was an art teacher, so I had the whole building. And I also taught in, with districts within driving distance and the private schools where I could teach out of my certification, which was quite an experience. I would like to touch on the Washington High School scenario. I'm not bragging or anything. I've been to six different colleges and universities. I didn't graduate from them all, but I was influenced by them, and I've always been interested in human behavior. Well, I wanted, like I said, I wanted to talk, touch on Washington High School just a little bit. And a prelude to that is what happened once when I was at an elementary school on the playground with playground duty, and the teachers started saying at a certain point on that day that they could not believe what was happening to the language of the children on the playground. It just seemed to change to the negative on that, starting on that particular day. And we got to talking about it, and we all realized that week was the week that cable television came to Cedar Rapids. Things can influence things. So, I think that the school board really handed, handled Washington High School scenario in a very well way, as much as you can. But in studying all this human behavior and abnormal behavior, I came up with a formula in this area. And so, I would like to give you this formula that is happening to our society that may give you some insight in trying to deal with things like this. I'm really into cause and effect. I'm, I'm kind of wired to be solution-oriented. And I am a political activist and a consumer advocate. I call my Washington delegation, at least in Washington, DC, at least once a week, and they really like my input, and I really wonder where some of these things come, some of these ideas. I go by faith. I think that's where it's coming from. I certainly don't think of some of this stuff. But here's the formula, and really think about this. Adult sex, adult 24/7 sexual innuendo in the form of adult softcore and hardcore pornography stimulates sexual predator and pedophile predation. Now, I'm not talking about children's pornography. I'm talking about adult pornography. The reason being, when you bring this up, they always say, well, we got children's pornography taken care of. So, we are inundated in our society 24/7 with softcore and hardcore pornography every way you can think of. If you don't think that has an effect on people, especially if they like it and get involved in it, and I keep thinking of these little kids on that playground, some of them, their innocence hasn't been destroyed yet, but cable TV was starting to do it. So, that's just my insights. You can do with that whatever you want to. But I would also like to suggest, and I'm going to go through this really fast because I only got about two minutes, one minute. Well, I'll be back, but I would like to at least suggest, I didn't want to rush, I'm thankful you do give us five minutes now. Can you imagine trying to do this in three minutes? I have a list of five different courses I would like to suggest. After, I'm one of your products. I've been, I'm 72 and a half years old. And so, these are courses I wish that we would have. First is a course on the magic of compound interest. Have you ever seen these charts, just start out with $10,000? It may go like this, but it's always going up. For 50 years, going through the world wars, the depression and everything, it ended up being like four or $5 million that you could end up with. I would like to see an age-appropriate course on the magic of compound interests, and maybe some of our young people could see how easy it is to make money instead of getting in into drugs.
Mr. Sealy, excuse me, your time is up.
I'll be back. Sure. With that, we'll go ahead and move into our consent agenda. Are there any comments or items pulled that you want to pull for questions? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A roll call due to the personnel report.
Director Ann Halt.
Aye.
Director Westercamp.
Aye.
Director Jacobo.
Aye.
Director Jansen.
Aye.
President Laberty.
Aye. All right. Next, we'll move into the work session portion of our meeting. I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Buck.
Great, thank you. So, this evening, we have Rob Schwartz with us from RSP as well as Dr. Dave Stokes. And Rob has worked with us before, and he's done a lot of work with us on enrollment and student enrollment patterns. And Dr. Stokes, most recently retired from Cedar Falls as superintendent, and before that, I believe, Grinnell. Isn't that right? Okay. So, welcome to them this evening. So, the board has had a priority related to facilities, and so, there's been significant conversation about doing some projecting about where we are with our facilities and what the future might hold related to an ongoing facility conversation. So, tonight, these two gentlemen are going to present to us a couple of options, potential plans, about how we might attend to the facility conversation in Cedar Rapids. So, with that, Rob, I'll turn it over to you, and away we go.
All right. Good evening. Along with Dr. Stokes tonight, I have Dr. Sanders, who's coming in right here. So, we'll talk to you quite a bit about our team here in a moment. And all three of us will be talking to different aspects in this presentation. What we're going to walk through is, just like learning or going through a facility master plan, it's a process. It's a journey, right? Back to 2013, it's a journey. And I think we're going to take you through watching a couple of videos. We're going to start out with a video, and then we're going to get into some vernacular that we feel is important through our conversations with administration or work with other districts that will be the foundation to a facility master plan that, in the end, will benefit the students with what's important to them, that's being college and career-ready. So, without further ado, a little bit of an introduction. To my right, you heard Dr. Stokes. He's a former superintendent in Iowa. I keep pulling him out of retirement to do these type of projects. He's working with me as well with Clerk Rick Amena on a facility master plan process there. He's been a teacher, an administrator, obviously a superintendent. I have Dr. Sanders on our team. We're so blessed to have her on our team. Brings a very critical set into what we're going to be exploring in this facility master plan. She's had a lot of experience as a teacher, as an administrator. She's worked in fast-growing districts in Kansas, which would be the Latha School District, the Blue Valley School District, and she's also worked with the Kansas City Missouri School District. So, she brings a very diverse set of skills that we think will be very beneficial in this process as we embark on some different aspects of what's happening in your community and how does it relate to providing those 21st century learning skills for your kids. And so, as Dr. Buck indicated, we've been doing, as many of you know, for many years, a lot of work in your district with enrollments, with your redistricting that we did, was it five, six years ago? All of that has provided us the ability to kind of understand what's happening in Cedar Rapids and what could that mean. When we started out on this journey of a facility master plan, our initial meetings with administration was, hey, this is brick and mortar. All we have to do is look at what our assessments are, what our costs are, and then we should be able to map out, well, what does this mean? How does this relate to our funding? How does this work with the timing of what we do with different facilities? So, we showed a video here that I'm going to pull up, and this video, I'll have Ann do an introduction while I'm setting it up. It'll kind of set the tone for really how we felt this facility master plan process could work. Go ahead and do the introduction, and I'll get this ready.
Well, first of all, good evening. How are you each doing? This video is truly a delightful video. I think all of us like to vision a future. And this is, can we continue to do what we've always done? Or will we get what we've always gotten? Our students deserve better, and so, we know that working together and visioning together, we will be able to provide them a 21st century type of education. A lot of people, when they look at the future, they look at it from a couple of different perspectives. Sometimes they look at it from an idea of dreaming, and they dream a utopia, and then they don't know how to make that happen. Some people then approach the future with dread, and that's with fear. And in each one of these, people are looking very passive. But there is a third way, and that is designing with intention, integrated design. And so, we're going to let you look at this video, and we believe that you will agree with us that we can design a future that our children deserve.
What do we think of when we think of the future? As a country, we have always embraced the future and discussed many big ideas about what the future may hold. All of us have a common interest in the future, kids. What does the future hold for them? Our current system is failing our kids and our country. We know that America is falling behind. We are not getting kids where they need to be in reading, science, and math. Education is a critical part of the solution to every problem we face. The key question is, what does the future of learning look like, and how will we create it? When we think about the future, we're usually doing one of two things, dreaming or dreading. When we dream, we start with an idea, a positive trend, and take this idea to its logical conclusion. We imagine a utopia that represents our hopes for all that's possible. Maybe that idea is a belief in the promise of technology to transform learning. What would that look like? We might dream of being able to assess each student's needs and then magically give them exactly what they need, exactly when they need it. But this is impossibly perfect and simplistic, ignoring the complexities of the learning process. When we dread, we start with a fear, a downward trend, and we likewise play out this idea to its logical conclusion. We imagine a dystopia, one filled with our fears of what might happen in the future. Here, the very same issue, the use of technology in the classroom, might veer off in a completely wrong direction with dreadful outcomes, kids trapped in a matrix of robotic instruction. Of course, this is equally simplistic and ignores technology's potential. Whether dreaming or dreading, our role in the future we imagine is usually passive, where the future is something that happens to us and to those around us. But there's a third way we can think about the future. Between dreaming and dreading lies designing. For designers, the future isn't a far-off place. It's a place where they work every day. Design is a form of activism. We imagine the future we want, then pick up the tools to start building it. Designers see the world as a kit of parts. They reshape and reassemble the best pieces from what's already out there to create something new and better. So, what does it take to rethink learning? It's not about replication. It's about selecting and integrating many different parts to create the foundation of a new model. This is the art of integrative design. From birth to adulthood, society's purpose is critical, to accelerate our learning. And what's most important for kids today is learning how to learn. Society must develop learners ready to tackle challenges they cannot anticipate. Education is a system we created to serve that purpose. Over 100 years ago, we invented modern schooling to send kids to one of three main places, the factory, the farm, or the university. We always lost some kids, but this model provided a middle-class life for most and economic growth. Over time, the economy changed, farm jobs diminished, and office jobs surged. College grads always had better access, but there was also a path straight from high school to the office. As office work changed, it got harder to get there from high school. Eventually, that path disappeared. College became the main path to opportunity. We started sending more kids to college, but we didn't change the overall system. Education broke down, trapping too many kids on paths that no longer made sense for them or for the country. As farm and factory jobs continued to decline, we started to lose even more students. The retail sector rose up to catch them, but these low-skill, low-wage jobs often failed to move kids forward in life. With a decline of good jobs, kids had nowhere to go. Retail increasingly offered the only alternative. We lost even more students to dead-end futures. More high school graduates tried to get into college but found they were not prepared for success academically or financially. Fortunately, community colleges emerged to help people reengage in their own learning and seek new pathways forward. They helped many students get back on track, but most students still found their way to community college on their own or by accident. Today, far too many kids exit the K-12 system feeling stuck. Our model of school is broken. To understand how it's broken, we need to look inside. We see a system of six parts which create a student's experience. First, what they learn, how they learn, and how we know their learning, and also, where and when learning happens and who's involved. How we configure these parts determines how kids move through the learning process. More often than not, these parts form rigid barriers blocking the way forward or putting kids on the wrong path. Various innovators have focused on adjusting one or two of these parts to help kids move forward. This has spurred important progress. But this approach is not the answer. What we need is learning integrated by design, addressing all parts at once rather than one or two in isolation. When we get this right, we make it possible for kids to accelerate their learning, to move forward in the direction they want to go. The best design models require kid power. Students must apply themselves to the learning process. It's our job to give them this chance, and we believe that's more possible now than ever before. Our research shows that a few key attributes are central to the new models we need. Future of learning models must be personalized, learner-driven, applied, cost-effective, and tech-enabled. And of course, kids don't power this system on their own. For every model, a set of outside conditions can either block its progress or help it take off and really work for kids. Without the right conditions, better models cannot take hold and scale. But just imagine what the future of learning would look like if we aligned these new models with the conditions that help them succeed. It would be a future where schools help kids get what they need to become successful learners and to accelerate their learning. But while school remains critical, it's not the only place where learning happens. Kids must be able to explore all their opportunities for learning, both in school and beyond. When we create a single, integrated system, students will practice becoming lifelong learners, ready to go on to college or good jobs, ready for the challenges and opportunities of the future that awaits them. This is society's new purpose. We're already mapping this new learning ecosystem. We call our map the Human Capital Continuum, the paths that learners travel from birth to age 26 as they prepare for success in the adult world and where far too many get stuck at key transition points. At Two Revolutions, we design and launch future of learning models and help catalyze the conditions within which they can thrive. We are partnering with forward-thinking governments, funders, nonprofits, and entrepreneurs to innovate all across the Human Capital Continuum. Visit us at tworevolutions.net.
All right. How many of you, does that resonate with something that you've either experienced or your students, your children, or your grandchildren? This kind of capture, kind of the essence of maybe some of their experience? I mean, even. I want that one. I would like to say that those kids that were falling off weren't hurt, but if you really think about the ideas that were presented here, that's what we're trying to prevent, right? Everything that you guys talk about, whether it's the personalized learning, what you do in these buildings is all to minimize that, prepare these kids for the future. That kind of leads us into another aspect in this journey that we've had with your administration to this point is, you know, first we had this video, and it kind of captured the essence that this process has to be more than just brick and mortar. It has to get to the learning abilities of the students. And so, what we've captured here, and we'll talk to you in brief detail, is this ACE concept. So, we have academics, culture, and economics. And this is different in every community that we work in, and it's going to determine what you can do in a community. And if you think about these three pillars, if you have a focus on just academics, you're going to have all these great programs. But if you fail to reflect on what that budget, that economic piece is, you won't be able to afford it. There's also the benchmark of your culture, which you can almost think of more like a pendulum, where your community is on a particular item of how much money they want to spend or what learning they want those teachers or those students to experience. That's going to determine how much of the economic programming or academic programming that you receive. So, I'm going to have each of us describe each of these in a little bit greater detail. The first is academics, so.
I get to speak to the fun part, which is the academics. Definitely, if we want our students to learn, we've got to know what it is and what the outcomes are that we want for them. And we want it not just for one student, but we want it for every student, because every student should have that opportunity to have a future for which they can be a contributing person in their society and their community. And so, if you look at these components that go into the academic picture, you see very first professional learning communities. And I know that your district has a goal about professional learning communities and that for, what all of us know for 21st century workplace is that no one works in isolation anymore, that it is a team concept. anymore, that it is a team concept, and that it's when you unleash the power of the team, that's when excellence actually shines through. And so with professional learning communities, you've already said, what is it we want them to learn? How are we going to know that they're learning it? What are we going to do if they aren't learning? And what are we going to do if they already know what it is that we're attempting to teach? So academics has to address professional learning communities of teachers working together to create the kind of synergy so that every child can reach his or her full potential. I've also seen that and hear, you know, time and time again, we want our kids to be college and career-ready. We also want them to be college and career-successful. So we want them not only to enter college and/or a career, but we want them to be successful. So that's part of the academics, and that's part of charting their individual course so that they can definitely be the person that they would want to be and have the kind of life that they deserve. We know that every child deserves a guaranteed and viable curriculum, that it should be relevant and rigorous, and a lot of people are just into the rigor, but we say high expectations with high support. So you can expect a lot, and they need the support to get there. And some students need more support than others. Quantitative growth. Every student should be able to chart his or her own course or see the progress that he or she has made in reaching those academic goals that have been set for them and that have been set by the state. Equity and proficiency. I also saw, as in many districts, that you're looking at closing that academic achievement gap. And one of the ways that we know that we're going to do that and that you have embraced is this idea of equity. And we know that equity and equal are not the same, that we know that equity is giving the child what he or she needs and not what the next kid sitting next to him or her may need. Class size is a learning space, and each district and each community knows what they're thinking is the optimal and the best class size. And so that has to be determined. Also, it has to be balanced against the size of the learning space. Enrollment and capacity go hand-in-hand with class size, and that is what is the capacity of the building. As the enrollment grows, how will we manage that? If enrollment declines, how will we manage that? And then the last on this particular slide is about educator resources and tools. And we know that this is a tech-enabled society and that our educators are using technology to bring the world into the classroom. And so we need to provide them not only the tools, because they're pretty and they're nice, but if they don't know how to use them, if they don't have the professional development, they just sit and they are never unleashed or the capacity or their potential is not unleashed. So that's academics.
Did anyone have any questions about the academic piece before we go on? All right, the culture piece. This gets into really what makes up the Cedar Rapids community. You know, so you have different things that are related to athletics in each of these bullet points. The most important things that we believe make up your culture is really that bottom part, and that's the Cedar Rapids experience. So what are your beliefs? What are your values? And what are your attitudes toward what a student could potentially experience when they come to school, whether they're a kindergartner or a sophomore in high school? This is that piece that I was telling you that's like that pendulum. Where the community feels your education should be is going to be where the dollars go and where the programs are that you actually fund. Any questions about the cultural piece?
For the economic piece, I'd like to say this is where philosophy meets headlong with pragmatism. We can, as, oops, excuse me, as Rob mentioned a minute ago, we have a lot of great ideas. And what I used to say was, hey, let's think about this program. And my business manager would say, that's a great idea, Dave, but how are you going to fund that? So we have to make sure that those two things meet. One of the things that we see in many districts that we work in is their previous work before we are engaged in the district focuses more on the economics and brick and mortar than all three of these pieces combined. So what we're going to try to do with your committee that's been established is to help them understand all the economic details, but then also understand the big picture. For example, we know all of our different funds that we have to work with have different rules and regulations, but beyond that, they need to know what the opportunity costs are when a decision's made to pay for a particular item out of a particular fund. So as we work with the committee in a very transparent, very open, very engaged way, these are the big-picture items in terms of economics that we're going to work with them on. You can see there are specifically four main big-picture concepts of repurposing schools, remodeling additions, new construction, closing schools. You haven't, you know, you know what your economic costs are. You also know that you're not going to have enough money to fund all of those needs that have been identified. So how do we make the best decisions that we can for kids? That might include a bond referendum. We know that the community is going to have to be engaged with that if that's going to And we want to do everything in a fiscally responsible way. So it's going to be a process of working with your committee through all these big-picture ideas to come up with the recommendations that they're going to make. Any questions on the economic piece? I'm sure with Steve's leadership, you're well-versed in all of those things.
And one more thing to speak to all of this with the ACE. One of the more popular things that we're hearing from districts is, when you look out in time, is the amount of revenue that you have, is it going to be able to support things? Some districts we're working in where they may ideally want, let's say, 17 or 18 students per class, or a size of an elementary school being a three-section versus being a six-section. These are the realities that we live in, is when you're starting to plan for the future, the way your system is set up now may not operate very well in the future for preparing these kids for the academic successes or the work readiness that you're trying to train them for. And so hopefully what you're starting to see from the process that we're kind of getting closer to talking to you about is we have to think out of the box. We can't just rest on what we've done over the last five years, 10 years, or 20 years. The things that, you know, as I look at you as board members, I mean, all of us are probably far enough removed from being in the high school experience that a whole generation, two generations, maybe even three generations of kids have gone through the system. So we have to think differently, and that gets back to that video, right? Where we already know we're lagging as a country, and we know we're lagging if we break the different groups out with whatever district we're talking about in Iowa or specifically with Cedar Rapids, that those are the daunting challenges. But if we focus, if we ask the right questions, we start to use the data that's available here in your district, we can start to make the best decisions for students. And I think that's probably one of the reasons why you're a board member, right? So I'm going to let, I think, Ian speak a little bit with this process that we've kind of taken with that video and with understanding a little bit more about your district. How does all of this stuff kind of start to come together?
Rob has a slide here of a visual depiction of really the entire process only from a balcony view. And he'll talk about all the details in a little bit. Obviously, we've talked about students that are college and career-ready and being successful when they're at that level. This represents all of our academic programs are interweaved around all the players that participate in helping to make our kids' college and career successful. At different points in the process, these different groups will become engaged at relatively different speeds and at different times throughout the 18-month process. So as I mentioned before, we want to have a lot of community engagement. We want to engage everyone that's listed on one of these gears or representatives from everyone. And if you're having a hard time reading the screen, let me share with you what those different gears represent. In the middle, the big one is a college and career-ready, and then the two orange ones, Board of Education obviously has a significant role, Faculty and Staff has a significant role, and then the lighter blue gears around the outside one are stakeholders. Everybody in your community is a stakeholder. Government, whether it's city, state, federal government, they all play a role in what we're doing in our school districts. Funding is a huge piece. And finally, organizations within your community. And again, it's a visual representation of how this entire process works together.
One of the things you heard me say and that you have embraced is this concept of professional learning communities. And so what we know is that every stakeholder, every group, has a role that they will play in the ultimate vision that is adopted. And so one of the things that we will look at is what are the roles that each of these entities will play? Well, we know that the Board of Education is to provide the framework for the process and the community values and to receive the committee's recommendation, to listen to community input, and after discussion approve a plan that will guide the decision in making timely decisions for student academic achievement. If you recall the visual that Dave just presented, in the center of that visual, as always it should be, is the student and the student learner. The administration will aid the process by providing guidance over the process, by being a resource to answer questions, and to really share out with the community as they meet with different community groups of what the committee work is actually going on, and to help them to see the plan and have a targeted communication plan. What will RSP do or what are they proposing that they would do? Well, they will facilitate, that's one of the things. They will utilize data. They will create accurate enrollment projections, and they will facilitate meetings, and they will find meaningful dialogue with all of the stakeholder groups. And they will work very, very hard to ensure that every student experiences a world-class education, that his or her educational experience is enhanced. What will the committee or committees do? Well, first of all, they'll discuss and analyze the data and the information. They'll provide feedback. They'll engage with other community persons. You know, it's like each one teach one. They will examine the options. They will definitely embrace the community values that they know, and they will prioritize what is, what are the steps and how do we get to that desired end. And the community, very important. They will review the options, they'll provide constructive feedback, and they'll give information for the board to consider as the board, you know, begins its arduous process of making a decision that is in the best interest of every child in this district.
All right, that brings us to the process. And when we started out on making this process, it was eight and a half by 11. Well, by the time we got to working through what this would actually look like, it became an 11 by 17, and even now, it's still pretty small. But we have two options that are being presented to you tonight, and I'm going to go over option one. And then the only difference between option one and option two is the number of public inputs and the number of committee meetings. And so we'll start at the bottom, which, you know, usually want to start at the top. We'll start at the bottom with the legend, because you need to understand that everything is dictated by these colors. And so the blue represents the Board of Education, the orange represents public inputs, the darker green subcommittee work, the lighter green committee work. Then there's yellow, which is the consultants, and that could be a combination of resources. It could be RSP, it could be SHIV Hattery, it could be K-12 Insights. We'll talk about that in a moment. And then we have, what's this chain, which is the executive team? And then we have the pink, which is staff assistants. The importance of the chain is that you can see that everything kind of works its way through with the team, the executive team, having a little bit of oversight on what could occur in each of these various components, whether it's at the subcommittee level, the committee level, or the public inputs. The other importance in this particular process is we felt with our interaction with you as a board in the past, you like to have a little bit of an update of what may be happening in the process. And if the process starts to go a different direction, you may be able to consider what that conversation has been and bring in some new information, maybe redirect it, or give your affirmation that it's going in the right direction as a group, as of board members. So what we know in our experiences with the things that we're potentially going to embark on is, first, we have no idea where this actually lends itself. You know, what does this mean? Does this mean that you all of a sudden build five-section elementary buildings? Does this mean that buildings are closed? Does this mean that you change programming? Does this mean you change grade configurations? What does this all mean? We can't tell you right now what that is. And that's probably the beautiful thing of this process is that it's open to the framework that you as a board provide, the expert information that your administration provides into this. But what we know in this Phase 1 is there are certain things that we need to build the foundation. So when we get to the committee, we already kind of have an understanding of some of these things. So let me talk about each of these five different subcommittee groups. So we have five of them. The first, Subcommittee 1, is about finance. So what does this mean with your Pebble? What does this mean with your SAVE? What does this mean with the dollars where, when we go back to your 2013 report, you know, we know that there's over $400 million, I believe, of work to be done on your buildings, and that's just to keep them the way they are, to bring them up to a standard of, let's say, the HVAC or different security aspects. It does not get into some of the teaching and learning aspects of what could take place in those buildings. And I know in our conversation with administration, I was a look over there and I see Rob, and he's smiling right now, but it's like, could this mean that there's even more money that needs to go into these buildings? Because it hasn't been looked at from that aspect. It's just, hey, we have this building and there's these things that need to be done. So we don't know where that could go, but we have to understand what's that financial piece. So our idea is with this committee members, let's say there's 100 of them, 20 would be assigned to each of these subcommittees. So I've just talked about Subcommittee 1, which is the finances. Subcommittee 2 is more of the educational programming. So what is it today? What is the dreams for what this should be in the future? And how will that start to play out with some of the financial aspects? As you can see, some of these strands are going to start to cross over. Subcommittee 3 gets into, you know, what is an ideal grade configuration? Are there certain grade configurations that maybe in certain parts of your community may work best than what you have now with K-5, 6, 8, 9, 12? Does it get into like grade centers? So one specific building for a grade? Or does it get into a boundary realignments? Because we have these changes that are going on with demographics. So what could the outcome be for this particular tasks under Subcommittee Number 3? And Number 4, they would be focusing on new schools, renovations, and then creating some triggers for that criteria. Because you know, we have this 100 bypass, and there's been a lot of conversation about, well, when that gets put in, are we going to see a massive explosion of residential growth in those areas? So if we're going to be planning for growth in that area, well, what are some of the aspects that this subcommittee should come out with to help get us to a particular goal in that particular element? So we get to Subcommittee Number 5. That focuses, I didn't want to be on this committee, but this one gets into the closing and repurposing and triggers that might be considered when you do that. What comes out of these subcommittees is what would be consensus from the subcommittee that could be a recommendation or a consideration that the whole committee would then consider. And I'll talk a little bit about that as we move into those lime greens. But as you can see, under each of these boxes, we have dates. And so we have the board making a decision on a facility master plan at your September 12th meeting. And then you can see there's different dates. And then you can see there's different dates under these subcommittees, because we know there's going to be multiple meetings for some of these. At this point, we've determined that Subcommittee One and Subcommittee Two can meet probably two times and get what they need from those two particular subcommittees. If they need to meet more than that, that may need to happen. Subcommittee Three, Four, and Five, we feel that three meetings with those subcommittees and we can get the consensus or recommendation for those particular items to bring forward to the committee. There's a lot of information about subcommittees. Does this make sense to everybody, what I'm talking about here? What we found, if we don't have this deeper dive into the data and what you're doing at the committee level, and we have this many people, it's hard to get some consensus and some traction to what this means. So, if we bring some ideas from the group, because they're smaller, 20 of the 100 per se, we'll be able to get some good traction on how they should move forward and what this could look like for your facility master plan. So, all of that work is to be completed before this year is out. So, time December 31st rolls around, and Option One, we've completed all of the subcommittee work, and we're ready to begin the hard work at the committee level. In order to get to the subcommittee, we have a committee meeting Number One, which gets into the things that we've started out with in this meeting. You know, why are you here? What is the process? What is the direction from the board? What's the expectation from administration? I think, one of the board members, you raised your hand, you had a question.
I did, maybe you'll get to it, but I hope we can take questions as you go along.
Absolutely, absolutely.
What happened, the subcommittee's members then are actually part of the committee as a whole.
Correct, correct.
What happens when there's a conflict between what's coming out of some of those subcommittees and other, and other subcommittee reports? So, you've got, you've got two different thoughts there coming together as a group. And the subcommittee's worked very hard, come up with an idea, and now you've got a conflict.
You know, that very question was something that we kicked around with administration and our team when we've met. Like, man, it would be ideal if, like, everybody just talked about all of the stuff that's in each of these subcommittees. So, what we've developed in this process is, and I'll give you an example. If I'm on Subcommittee Two, and we're just talking about all of the wonderful academic programming and what it means, they're not talking about that with the knowledge of what is occurring in the checkbook. They're just saying, this is what educationally we think should happen to kids, and so, here's what our recommendation is. Much like the budget, they're probably going to come out of there, after they talk with Steve, they're going to be depressed. I mean, talking about money, it's, you're not depressing when you talk, Steve, it's the information. But, but the point is, is they're going to be honed in, this is all that we can afford. Or if we want to do this, this is what needs to be done. It may be a bond referendum. It may be how you better utilize some of the SAVE dollars or the Pebble dollars, right? So, they're going to come to the committee, and they're coming out of this subcommittee with just these absolutes. And when we have this conversation at the committee level, that's where the rubber hits the road. And these different lines of thought are going to get flushed out with the committee members. And our idea was, that if we have this group of, let's say, 100 people, and they're broken up in 20 people in each of these subcommittees, when we have these committee meetings, when we get down to committee meeting Number Two and Three, and we start to peel back those layers of the onion, there'll be enough representation at the small group breakouts from each of these subcommittees. These things are going to immediately be infused in, and we're going to have some really good dialogue. And I think that's the hope, is if we have good consensus and/or recommendations out of this subcommittee on what you do with each of these items, it will get worked out at the committee level. Does that help answer your question?
Thank you.
That's, definitely was one of our concerns. So, once we get done with the subcommittee, when you're in Option One, we're like, okay, this has been through the whole fall, we're into the winter, you as a board are probably going to want to know, what in the world are they thinking? Is it along the lines of what you all know? Because you have a collective knowledge and experience in a multitude of disciplines and understanding of what's happening in the district. So, you may want to provide some guidance, a redirect, or again, an affirmation that, hey, you guys are on the right track with, with, again, trying to get to the end, that none of us really know where the end is. We just know that if the focus is on the students, we're going to have the best end product in mind. So, that's a January 9th meeting. So, probably a lot of conversation there. Question?
Rob, will the board be given information that the subcommittees get throughout that process, so we can absorb some of that as they, so we understand it before they come to us on January 9th?
We can talk with administration. It may be that. It may be that there's, at least a week before your meeting, you kind of get, hey, here's where each of these subcommittees are. So, we're open to whatever will work best for you as a board or for administration to convey that information to you. Great question. So, once we get to that January 9th, then the next day, on January 10th, starts committee meeting Number Two. You can see, we've listed out under each of these lime green boxes what we generally think will be discussed at each of these meetings. Our team has already met with the subcommittee, and we've already figured out what we think we need to have for outcomes with those subcommittees. We'll be doing the same thing with each of these committee meetings, because if you're going to be spending 90 minutes to 120 minutes at each of these meetings, there has to be an outcome that you feel like you've achieved something. At least, that's the way we feel as facilitators. And so, each of these meetings will have a mapped-out agenda. There'll be things that they do that may be more fun than others. There'll be a lot of dialogue, a lot of interaction, because without that, we're not going to have a successful recommendation to you when it comes time back in, I guess it's October of 2017. So, you can see Committee Meeting Number Two, Three, Four, Five, Six, and Seven, we're really working toward getting what this plan could look like. And then, on April 10th, there's an update with where the committee is at, at that point. And we thought with our conversation with administration, it was, again, important that you would know, if there's going to be some public inputs, what in the world is going to be spoke about, that you're not blindsided, that you're going to have an understanding that they're talking about whatever, and you may go, wow, that's maybe uncomfortable for me. I didn't think they would go in that particular direction. But that's where they are, again, where the data's guiding them, where all of these innovative people are. Because what I didn't mention is, the people that are on this committee are a collective throughout your district. They're likely people that have already served on committees, whether it was your past boundary realignments, past bond referendum. There may even be some new people that are infused into this. We would expect they're going to range from potentially high school students all the way up to senior citizens. There'll be people that are involved from the city and county, maybe other different organizations, some of the different mover or shaker entities or persons. But we want as much input as we can at that committee level. If we bring, if we go through this process, if we don't have the right people onboard to talk about these items, and we get to this public input, we're going to get poo-pooed pretty bad, right? They're not, the community's going to say, where are you going with these ideas? So, we thought the board should hear what's going to go to the public before it goes to the public. I think someone had raised their hand.
As I look at this public input, and it's a ways off, I understand, but you have it set up, the way I see it is three days, three consecutive days in April. A year and a half process, and the public input is going to be over three days in a week in April, and I don't know where spring break hits, but it's somewhere, it could be in April, whatever. I just, I just hear some criticism of, yeah, you asked for public input, but we really didn't have a chance to do it. I would suggest maybe a longer time span, or spread out a little bit more, certainly to give at least a broader time span and schedule for input to it. And maybe at, I see there's another one later at the, toward the end, too.
Absolutely. And if you look at Option Two, that was something that your administration indicated, yeah, you as a board. So, if you flip it over and you look at Option Two, the difference between One and Two is there's three other public inputs that occur before this year is out, that would give the community the potential comments on where the subcommittee consensus or recommendations might be. And then it comes to you as a board. So, we inserted that, so that way, in Option Two, there's the potential, they have more input early on, and so that way, when it gets down to this April, there seems to be more of, more input is really...
I like that, I wasn't reading ahead, so I...
I like it, I see. Normally, you pass something out, and everybody's already read it. So, and the other idea that we had with these public inputs is, they would be at each of the high schools. And it would be the same information at each of those high schools. And so, with those three dates, life happens, right? You may have a basketball, you may, well, actually, if it's in the spring, it's probably track and field, or maybe some drama things going on. And so, you may not be able to meet one of those dates, but you could go to one of the other high schools and have the same information. So, whatever happens at meeting, public input one, would be the same at public input Number Three. Then after that, we felt that the board would want to know, well, okay, what did all of the public input mean? And so, in this public input, the physical coming there, but then this is where K-12 Insight has indicated they would assist with some of the survey work, to be able to garner, again, what are people thinking that did not have the time to be able to come to either of those, or any of those three meetings? We'd have all of that information as well. We'd have all this information from the people who came to those meetings, and we would give you an update on May 8th of what all of this meant. And we put it at that May 8th board meeting, because after these public inputs, we felt maybe you keep the online portion open longer to get more input. And again, we've been working with the district and what Marsha could do with some of the communication elements to, again, try to get as much involvement as we can.
I have just a question here. So, all of this is leading to college and career-ready, so college, career. So, those two elements, where do those fit into this process and understanding what our colleges and universities and our local employers or national employers are looking at in terms of the output from our district? Is there a place in this that we can include some of that feedback or input?
Absolutely. That starts on September 20th. They have to understand what is occurring here in your community as it relates to the ability to have students that are ready for the workforce, or that are ready to go to Kirkwood or down the street to Iowa University. So, we'll be infusing all of that throughout this entire process, particularly at that committee level, because we have to keep them focused. Here's where we're trying to go, and we're going to end with a video that will help you understand what I'm talking about here, is we're so used to solving problems that work, that fit in this box, and we can't any longer afford to do it that way. We have to think outside the box. And so, when we bring this group of 100 people in, they have to continually be reminded of some of the norms, the realities that these students are going to be faced with, even five years from now.
Well, and that's good coaching for, as we, when we think about putting this committee together, thinking about having some community college representations, some four-year college representations, so that voice is threaded through. I think that's some good...
Workforce, too. I mean, we have...
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. Yep, that's great.
We have that great relationship going. I mean, the Iowa Big Program and some of those hands-on learning opportunities that we have, so...
Yeah, that's good coaching.
Keith, you had a question?
I have a concern about, you go through this whole process, and the implementation is the most difficult one. And schools tend not like to change very much. And, you know, unless we're planning for that next step, five years ago won't be much different than it is today. And also, another part of that is, is being sure that we connect with what's research-based and proven, because we can't afford to be doing programs that are not effective. And how much guidance is going to be given to the committees at, at, these are the things that are proven to work. I'm not saying guide them, but, you know, we've got to come up with workable ideas.
And I think that's where we'll lean between the experiences that we have, because other people that are on our team that aren't here tonight, and we have other former and current administrators throughout the Midwest that are infused in this to provide some of that research and whatnot, but we'll be leaning on your administration as well, because they're the ones that are putting into play these particular programs.
Right, there's concern for me that a lot of these administrators and so on themselves are not willing to step outside the box. And so, you know, I think you need to bring in business leadership as well, because unless they're competitive, they're not successful. And that's going to happen to education, too. Unless we get the job done, we're not going to be around.
And that's a great point. And if you circle back to Subcommittee Two, and you circle back to who's going to be on this committee, we're going to have some of these business leaders that will be able to infuse some of those ideas right from the start of this process. So, what you're saying is exactly what you're going to see in this process from education leadership, what's tried and proven with data, but then also what we see in the business community, what we see at the universities, college, community colleges, and so on.
Well, we have instructional leaders, teachers in the classroom that are at these various levels as part of these committees. I mean, I'm just thinking about administrators, you have a perspective on how this should all be. Certainly, parents and things have a perspective, students will have a perspective, but I just want to make sure that the people that are in the classrooms day-to-day have a voice in it as well.
Absolutely. And that's why that pink box that says August through September 2016 at the top, that's the key element for your district administration, is ensuring that the right players, and not the right players to fit into this box, but the right people to engage in a conversation that helps advance us to what this college and career-successful student should look like.
To bring this back to the fact that this is, what we're really looking at is facilities in our, in our learning centers, you know, that's really what the focus of this is going to be about. And as we move, you hit some, you had some very good points. It's a, it's a difficult area to be in right now, is education and trying to project the future. But the more that I read and the more that I hear, it is flexibility, it is broad skills, it's a broad brush, rather than more specific, very honed skills, because those things may disappear as we go on. So, students, learning to be students, learning how to learn, creativity, innovation, teamwork, and so on. And so, as we look at facilities, I think it's, how do those, how do our facilities allow us to have the flexibility to incorporate, to have those, develop those kinds of skill? And also, to have the flexibility to be able to adapt and change. Our buildings, we like to consider long-term, like, you know, 50, 60 years, but have the flexibility and structure that they can adapt, that the building itself is a, is a living entity that can change and adapt as, as things are going to change as we move forward. So, just personal comments.
Did either of you want to mention anything? Could come up here.
Well, I heard you say, research-based. I think that's very important. We also want evidence-based, because there can be research, but we want evidence that it is workable. And definitely, we know, when we say stakeholder representation, we do need the persons who are day-to-day in the classroom, but we need the persons from the outside that can push as well, whether that be university, whether that be business as well, so that every voice is honored, and so that we can come up with the most viable solution for our students.
All right, so I think that got us to May 8th. And that's after all of the public input portion, you get an update of what that means. And then, maybe a redirect, maybe an affirmation back to the committee, and they start digging in, beginning on that May 9th, going... May 9th, going through their May 23rd and their June 6th meeting to finalize what that recommendation may look like for you. And then, that is presented on September 25th as, hey, here's, here's where the committee recommendation is. And I think when we were talking with administration, they felt, because this is such a big topic, there's likely a need for a second meeting to understand what all of this could potentially mean. And then that leads to the October 10th meeting, where then there's an additional input for the community to know then, at that point, what you as a board are thinking about what that recommendation is, and what that means, again, to the college and career successful students. Then on October 23rd, that would be when the board adopts whatever this plan looks like. And, and the idea behind all of this, because this is over about 18 months, right? The idea is, I think someone mentioned about, well, how do you implement this? Well, the, the idea behind this October 23rd date was, we know that the building needs, we know what those are. SHIVE has provided that, right? And now, when we escalate what those costs are, now that it's three years later, and at this point, four years later, right? There's going to be the reality of, of what does this mean? How do we start funding this? Moving that cheese a little bit farther, closer to where you want that outcome to be through this process. So the implementation has to be kept in mind that there's going to be certain financial considerations that will be needed to implement this. There may be certain things that you have to change institutionally on how you actually do what you do for business, whether it's in the classroom, or what we're thinking about here at the district level. So, again, we, we've provided a process that's going to be fluid and organic, but it's going to be structured enough that you as a board can keep redirecting, and your executive team can keep things moving as well with some of these larger items. Because inevitably, through some of these, whether it's the subcommittee or the committee, there's going to be some stumbling blocks. There's going to be some things that may get into some of the political issues. I mean, go back to the 2008 flood recovery. Here we are in 2016. Have all of those things been achieved since then? Have we been able to get the funding to do things here in this community? Are we seeing the reinvestments? Are we seeing the changes that everybody dreamed about back after that flood in 2008? So, there's going to be some realities of what's happening in this community that, that there are going to be some struggles with, right? There could be some struggles if we talk about, let's say, grade configuration changes. There could be struggles with, well, right now, I think most of your elementaries are 400 students or less that are actually physically in the building. Okay, what if we talk about efficiencies, and when you look at the model of, we're looking at the data that Steve has, what Piper Jaffrey provides, what if that's no longer feasible? What if you have to think about something different? Those are, those are the realities of what we're expecting, those minefields, albeit probably the best word for this, that we're going to struggle with as a committee. And so, we're, we think we've assembled the team, and with your administration, with your oversight as a board, we'll be able to get through those challenges and get something that your community will buy into, they'll be, have some passion for. Because anybody can create a plan, but we've got to create the framework of the people that are on this committee, that they're going out and they're passionate about where this is going to lead us. So that gets us to October 23rd. And then, so that's, that's option one. The difference between option one and option two was those three additional public inputs that are, still would be in this physical year, so December of 2016. And then we had to add another committee meeting in there, because we felt before something went to the public, since we had the committee broken out into the subcommittees, it would be important for them to know what the other subcommittees were recommending out for the public to comment on. So that committee meeting number two that we have scheduled for December 8th is to provide them that input of what all of the different subcommittees think. Doesn't mean they're going to say, "we agree with this." It's, hey, here's what's been discussed. Be ready for that type of conversation about those items when we get to that public inputs of December 13, 14, and 15.
So, Rob, in, these public inputs, it always seems like more public input is probably better. You've done this a lot of times. What's, which one of these seems to be the best received in the communities like Cedar Rapids that you've done this in?
I, I think public input is great if it's communicated what is going to transpire in, in these meetings. I mean, I'll just talk about one of the recent projects that Dave and I have been working on. I mean, people have a different passion for things. I mean, we have someone that came to a meeting and they were passionate about softball fields. You haven't done anything for 30 years on these fields. Why are you not going to do something to these fields? I mean, I see some of you smiling. You know what I'm talking about, right? It's, it's what their passion is. And it's not that it's not important, but how does that get infused into the process? We have to make sure the message that we need to be heard at those public inputs is very succinct, and that we are open to hearing what their ideas are, and it'll get funneled into, again, what the parameters are of this process. You may not get what you ultimately may ask for in public input one if we're looking at option two in December, when it's October 2017, but your voice will be heard with those committee members. And then you as a board will know that, because if you're at those public inputs, you're going to hear what those people have. And so we think a combination of having the ability to physically come there, talk with people, whether it's administration, our team, or even some of these committee members. A lot of times, people just want someone to hear them, right? I mean, you see, hear that all the time as board members. People have great ideas, and, and they may be able to convey it to you one-on-one. They may want to write something down. They may be able to go online. So, just giving them those right venues to provide their input is, is the most critical. It's not necessarily quantity. It's, it's the qualitative approach. You just don't have a public input just to say, "hey, let's have public input."
So, those public input sessions are those opportunities. I mean, how or where will that information, or will it even be incorporated into anything, or is it just that, just input?
It will be infused into the process where whatever information is received, like, for instance, when we look at option two, after that December 15th meeting, when we come back on January 10th for the committee meeting as a whole, they're going to have what all those comments are. They'll be summarized into categories of, let's say it was academic, let's say it was budget, let's say it was something that they wanted with a particular facility. It'll be put in there. Because again, it's not how many people say, "well, I don't like," it's more what the ideas are, and how that gets infused into, how will this make students successful in the future?
So it could be information that would potentially be actionable, something that maybe wasn't considered or discussed previously, right?
It, it could, it could reshape, maybe what the consensus item was, or what the recommendation coming out of those subcommittees for talking about those three meetings in December. Absolutely.
So as part of that, and, you know, I was going to try to save it until, you know, the end, but it kind of goes into a little bit of what we're talking about. So, when you think about the inclusion of various people from the community, organizations, business leaders, employers, accessibility is important to the public input process as well as the committee process, but there's still underrepresented groups. There's language barriers. There's economic barriers. I assume you've dealt with that in other districts as well. How would that be addressed here? Or what would be possible solutions or opportunities to address that?
Yeah, that's where we work with administration. There may be on, let's say, these dates where there is those public input. It could be maybe earlier in the day, we go to the Kiwanis. We go to some of these special groups that meet. Sometimes there's churches that have these meetings of group of influential people in a particular area. So we would work with administration to make this information get out to as many people as possible. And the other key to this is, we don't want anybody on December 13th, if they come to the public input and they've not seen anything before then, then we've done something wrong in our communication. Because the last thing you want is maybe someone heard, because one of the subcommittees is, is closing a school. "Oh, you're going to close my school," right? So you have all these people coming thinking their school's being closed. Well, I'm here to tell you, at the subcommittee level, there's not going to be any discussion about which school should be closed, if it's closing a school. It's about what criteria needs to be built into, why you would close a school. So, again, it's, it's having the right message out there, so when the people come, it's not a confrontational situation. It's one where they're able to provide good feedback in what this really should, should be, what should be considered. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. I guess what I'm hearing, it'd be more on the administration, if there were circumstances that would require, say, something with language, or, you know, okay.
Absolutely.
And we'll work with our liaison positions and do that kind of outreach too. I think that's a great thing to think about, though. Yep.
Rob, you talked about communication, and it's, it's an ongoing challenge of how, what's your experience working with other communities and so on? What's, what have you found are the best ways, mechanics for getting the communication and the information out?
It's basically all of the above. Whether it's actual physical letters that go out, the, the things that you're already doing with your district with technology, working with the media outlets, it's all of the above. The more information you can get out, the more you craft the story about what this process is. And they have to know it's transparent, right? And that, that we're not trying to hide anything. These, these are hard conversations that have to happen in a way that we can have some real solutions to be discussed on how they could be implemented.
Do you help facilitate that, or is that something that we use our internal, or use our own-
It's a, it's a combination of both. We'll, we'll help craft the, the message, provide the different materials that, through the facilitation process. So, with your communication director, we'll be helping temper that. There'll be things that I know internally with different graphics and such. You guys have a good skill set with that, so we can utilize those resources. So, yeah, we'll try to be as efficient with the, the resources that you have available, and not overwhelm them, because this is a process that's in addition to the, the role of what they're having to do every day, right? So, we don't want to become a burden, but there will be certain milestones where things will need to get out, and we'll work with them to make that happen.
I think it would be helpful, number one, to just be as transparent in this whole process as possible. So, as much as you can put out publicly on the website, just put it up there. We're, we're not here to hide anything. We want their input. We want them to see where this is going. So make that a priority. And then the other thing is, I think this communications plan is critical. We've seen too many times in the last 10 years I've been on the board where we have plans and the communication is an afterthought. And so, I think as we move into this, let's be proactive, come up with exact methods that we're going to reach out to the community. Is it going to be through social media? Is it going to be letters to parents? Is it going to be, you know, media inserts, or whatever it is? Let's come up with a plan, have a cost associated with that, and let the board understand, and the public understand how they'll be communicated to about this process. Again, just to be as transparent as, as we can in it, and that it's proactive. So, that's a thought I had on this.
Perfect. I think our team is taking that note down. So, that, that gives you the, the description of option one and option two and the differences between those. Are there other questions about the, the process itself? I mean, you can see, once, September 20th, that's just less than a month away, right?
So, Rob, I, I just want to confirm. So, yeah, now, all these public input sessions, these are actual face-to-face sessions, but it also says, "and online surveys." So at each of those steps, K-12 Insight will be doing some sort of online. And it, it won't be, will it, well, I guess you can answer, will it be preconceived ideas, questions, or will it allow for some flexible input from the public in those? And I think to Raphael's point, we have multiple languages being spoken in the district, and I'm assuming that K-12 Insight is able to account for Spanish and Swahili and some of the other languages being spoken in our community in this?
I'll let Dr. Buck speak to that.
K-12 has that level of capacity. I don't know if anybody has that level of capacity.
I, I think Raphael's point was, was valid. I don't want personally, any of our subgroups of parents to feel, or, or students to feel that they don't have that opportunity because of a language barrier. So, whatever we can do to be proactive in those things through translation opportunities, or face-to-face meetings that may be special outside of one, two, three boxes, to make sure that they have that option, that would be helpful.
Yeah. So we had K-12 Insight onsite, probably a month ago, I would, I would guess, and they have experience and background in this work as well. And so, we can reinforce to them the importance of doing all we can to reach out to all of our communities. So that'll be, we could certainly do that. So, and they, they were excited about jumping into this with us, because, like I say, they do have background, so, but.
And the other key point before I advance this slide is, is really what's on the slide itself, that's not on this deal in the purple, is you're not going back to ground zero. The work that was done to get you the brick and mortar stuff, it's not like that's just wadded up and thrown away. That's still part of this process, but it's really that, the green text underneath there that, that plays really the larger role in why this is needed and why it's different, in that the focus gets back to the students, not just the, the physical space itself getting fixed up and what that cost is. It's really more about the teaching and learning aspects. But the reality is, when you get to the ends, you're going to be talking about what you can do in these buildings, or what other spaces need to be created. I thought that was an important thing, because the work you did before, it's still very valid in this process.
I have a question on a timing issue in regard to the board itself. The first meeting that's reported back to the board is after an election. And so, you know, what planning are you doing to get through our new board members, to orientate those, because that's all in a short time period over what could be new board members?
You're talking about September 25th, 2017?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's part of why we had this, in this plan like this, because there are back-to-back meetings with this briefing work, and part of that is an acknowledgement that the board may be different.
Right.
Yeah. But I think that's another great thing to think about, Keith, as this gets closer. We could do a briefing session for all the candidates, so we could actually pull any people that are actually on the ballot to run for school board. We could pull them into a briefing somewhere along in that same timeframe to just talk them through where this work has been. I think that's a great thing to think some more about.
Well, my point is, is that there can be board members that run based upon, you know, wanting to abandon everything that was done before it's happened. And so I think we need to, hopefully that won't happen here, but, but we need to account for that, so all this work doesn't go for naught.
Yeah, and I think, I, as we're having this conversation, I wish I'd have done a little more framing at the start. We're all used to this conversation, because we've been talking about facilities well for the year-plus I've been superintendent, but for years before that. And one of the recognitions we have is that our community generously extended the PEPAL funding. And even in so doing, we have identified about $20 million a year in need, and we receive about $9 million. So we know that annually, we're losing about $11 million in ground. And if you go into that facilities, those notebooks from SHIVE, if you were to, and I'm going to say simply, this is nothing about this as simple, other than to acknowledge it, if you were to give a secure front entrance and a common gathering space, like a library or media center, I mean, these things that the community a few years back identified as sort of the core central pieces of an elementary, for example. If we were to go into all of our existing elementaries and do that work, and that in most cases does not even touch our classrooms, in some cases bring up HVAC to spec, I mean, there's some things listed in there, there is tens of million dollars of need beyond what we are able to put together with PEPAL and SAVE, especially in tandem with the conversation about ongoing maintenance. So, one of the things I especially appreciate about this board is a willingness to have this conversation, because we have a responsibility to our kids in, going forward and in the future, to take an honest, in-depth look about where we are from a facilities perspective, what our needs are, and make recommendations to our community based on what those needs are and what we could actually do from a fiscal perspective. And then, you know, I think ultimately, then the community has to decide what they're willing to do within that. But we are at a, at a moment in time with our board and these facilities, that we have to have this robust discussion around current state and future states that relates to facilities, and meeting the learning needs of our kids. So I, I appreciate that, and I kind of wish I'd done that framing at the start. We're all semi-used to this conversation, but that's part of what drives this whole thing, so.
So, so this is an educational needs- So, so this is an educational needs, facilities needs, somewhat marriage?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
And I would not want it to get out that any of this has anything to do with closing buildings. It's simply a study that was mentioned, because that's not the purpose.
Yeah, and I think we have, when we mention closing facilities, moving boundary, I mean, whatever all these pieces are, we have a responsibility to investigate all of the potential pieces of this. Whether or not any of this actually comes to life someday in a real plan, that'll be, wait to be seen. But we have a responsibility to investigate grade configurations, closings of buildings, efficiencies related to larger elementary, I mean, you can go right down the list. And I think in order to be fair to our community, we have to investigate all of those things, and then ultimately come up with a set of recommendations that we believe is the next right viable, fundable work for our kids. So, yeah. But I agree with you, it's not, this isn't a conversation about closing buildings. It's a conversation about current state and future state of our educational programs for our kids.
Not easy conversations, but as we learned before, those of us on the board, we can't wait 20 years to have difficult conversations and wait until we're facing a crisis situation to make the decision, so.
Dr. Buck, how, we had a nice outline this morning about theory of action and excellence for all, and some committee work that's moving that direction. Do you envision any conflict between this other facility study and what they're doing, and they're going to be talking about innovation, they're going to be talking about learning since so on, and the conflict with what we're moving with the other, with our theory of action?
Yes, our best hope is we can blend that work together. So when you think about innovation as one of the six drivers in our theory of action, and what way does innovation impact conversation about facilities and future use for kids, student learning, student ownership, I mean, all of those pieces are really about the high-quality learning experiences we want for our kids, and what would facilities look like to best deliver on that promise, not only in the short term, but, and we have buildings that are 100 years old. I'm not sure when, I would wonder if when they built one of our 100-year-old facilities, if they had in mind that that was going to be delivering the education that they are 100 years later. And kids still get a good education in that building. Could facilities be shifted such that it could even be better optimized? So, especially in light of resources and constraints on those, so.
All right, the last thing before we kind of close this out is, I'm not going to read through each of these bullet points, but these were to help you understand that some of these things are going to dig, or we're going to dive pretty deep into some of these elements when we're at the subcommittees, and then when it's pulled out at the committee level. And so, these were basically 10 areas of what we thought were very critical to this process. Whether we talk about neighborhoods, we talk about what an ideal school size is, what a grade configuration could be, when we start talking about this innovative learning, how does, how do all of those things get infused into this so that it kind of makes sense? Because if you were to go out on the street and you talk about, hey, what does think big mean? How many people are going to understand what think big means? We'd like to think more than not, right? But the reality is, they may not understand all of these concepts and what that may mean for a student experience in each of these schools. So again, these are just generalities of what we thought had to be touched upon in the conversations we've already had with administration to get it infused into this process. And that's why the last one, bullet point 10, the collaborative effort with other entities, is a really big piece. Because one of the things that I took away from that last redistricting process was, the school district, we were heading this direction, right? We had all of our cost estimates of buildings, and we were talking about things that, well, hey, if this building's worth 12 million and it's going to cost $6 million to bring it up to a certain standard, it's maybe reached its life cycle, and maybe we would be better served doing something different. So I'm just rehashing back then. And then you have the city that's talking about, well, hey, we want a reinvestment in a particular neighborhood, and if you close a particular building, then we can't realize our investment. So one of the things that I took away from that is, we have to do better in this process to bring the city and the county into the process, so that we're utilizing all of our resources for a outcome that benefits everybody in the community. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and I would just say too, not just the city, but there are multiple cities that we need to recognize as part of the school district, so. You guys, any other questions or comments at this point?
If not, I will close you out with this video that will get you, kind of write you into a funny thing. This is a video that we've shown on numerous occasions to, again, get you to think outside the box on how we learn, and how students maybe learn a little bit differently, and why this process has to involve something just a little bit different. So without further ado.
Welcome back to Smarter Every Day. You've heard people say, "It's just like riding a bike," meaning it's really easy and you can't forget how to do it, right? But I did something. I did something that damaged my mind. It happened on the streets of Amsterdam, and I got really scared, honestly. I can't ride a bike like you can anymore. Before I show you the video of what happened, I need to tell you the backstory. Like many six-year-olds with a MacGyver mullet, I learned how to ride a bike when I was really young. I had learned a life skill, and I was really proud of it. Everything changed, though, when my friend Barney called me 25 years later. Where I work, the welders are geniuses, and they like to play jokes on the engineers. He had a challenge for me. He had built a special bicycle, and he wanted me to try to ride it. He had only changed one thing. When he turned the handlebar to the left, the wheel goes to the right. He turns to the right, the wheel goes to the left. I thought this would be easy, so I hopped on the bike ready to demonstrate how quickly I could conquer this.
And here he is, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Destin Salam, first attempt riding the bicycle.
All right. So, faster, go, go. Yeah, yeah. I couldn't do it. You can see that I'm laughing, but I'm actually really frustrated. In this moment, I had a really deep revelation. My thinking was in a rut. This bike revealed a very deep truth to me. I had the knowledge of how to operate the bike, but I did not have the understanding. Therefore, knowledge is not understanding. Look, I know what you're probably thinking, Destin's probably just an uncoordinated engineer and can't do it. But that's not the case at all. The algorithm that's associated with riding a bike in your brain is just that complicated. Think about it. Downwards force on the pedals, leaning your whole body, pulling and pushing the handlebars, gyroscopic procession in the wheels, every single force is part of this algorithm. And if you change any one part, it affects the entire control system. I do not make definitive statements that often, but I'm telling you right now, you cannot ride this bicycle. You might think you can, but you can't. I know this, because I'm often asked to speak at universities and conferences, and I take the bike with me. It's always the same. People think they're going to try some trick, or they're just going to power through it. It doesn't work. Your brain cannot handle this. For instance, this guy, I offered him $200 just to ride this bike 10 feet across the stage. Everybody thought he could do it. No, 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 no. No, you didn't understand. You didn't understand. So, this way. All right, that's it. All right, so, whatever you're ready to do. No, no, you have to keep your feet on the pedal. All right, let's see where we're at. But it won't be, I don't know, like, you guys start rolling, and at least you're ready to go. And go. Keep your feet on the pedal. Go. Go right on. Keep your feet on the pedal. This is your internet, your technology.
It's all the teachers getting ready for class tomorrow.
She probably is.
You can send us the link to.
I know I'll be over.
I'm just going to set up a microphone.
Hey, it's me, Destin. Welcome back to Smarter Every Day. You've heard people say, "It's just like riding a bike," meaning it's really easy and you can't forget how to do it, right? But I did something. I did something that damaged my mind. It happened. Whatever you're ready to do. No, no, you have to keep your feet on the pedal. All right, let's see where we're at. But it won't be, I don't know, like, you guys start rolling, and at least you're ready to go. And go. Keep your feet on the pedal. Go. Go right on. Keep your feet on the pedal. Yep. All right, one more time, one more time. Once you have a rigid way of thinking in your head, sometimes you cannot change that, even if you want to. So here's what I did. It was a personal challenge. I stayed out here in this driveway, and I practiced about five minutes every day. My neighbors made fun of me. I had many wrecks, but after eight months, this happened. One day I couldn't ride the bike, and the next day I could. It was like I could feel some kind of pathway in my brain that was now unlocked. It was really weird, though. It's like there's this trail in my brain, but if I wasn't paying close enough attention to it, my brain would easily lose that neural path and jump back onto the old road it was more familiar with. Any small distractions at all, like a cell phone ringing in my pocket, would instantly throw my brain back to the old control algorithm, and I would wreck. But at least I could ride it. My son is the closest person to me genetically, and he's been riding a normal bike for three years, so that's over half his life. I wanted to know how long it would take him to learn how to ride a backwards bike, so I told him if he learned how to ride a backwards bike, he could go with me to Australia and meet a real astronaut. Are you going to give up?
No.
Go ahead. This is how it starts. Look at this. This is such a big deal. Get up, you got it. Did you see his brain get it? So he, in, how many weeks have we been doing this? Two weeks? In two weeks, he did something that took me eight months to do, which demonstrates that a child has more neuroplasticity, am I even saying that right, than an adult? It's clear from this experiment that children have a much more plastic brain than adults. That's why the best time to learn a language is when you're a young child. All right, today's bike vlog. I can ride smooth, I can ride fast. I'm thinking the experiment is over. Okay, now I'm in Amsterdam, a city that has more bicycles than people. The question is, can I ride a normal bike now? I mean, I've spent all this time unlearning how to ride a bike. If I go back and try to ride a normal one, will my brain mess up? So I've tweeted a Smarter Every Day meetup, if you will, and I'm going to see if somebody brings a bicycle, and I'm going to try to ride a normal bike. This was one of the most frustrating moments of my life. I had ridden a normal bike since I was six, but in this moment, I couldn't do it anymore. I had set out to prove that I could free my brain from a cognitive bias. But at this point, I'm pretty sure that all I've proved is that I could only redesignate that bias. So what you're not seeing is just a group of people here looking at me, looking at the strange American, that can't ride a bike because they think I'm dumb. But I'm actually two levels deep into this, because I've learned and unlearned. All right. After 20 minutes of making a fool out of myself, suddenly my brain clicked back into the old algorithm. I can't explain it, but it happened in a very specific moment. Got it, got it, got it. My bad. Oh, click, click, I got it, I got it. Okay, there it is. There was a moment. Okay, I can ride a bike. I tried to explain this to the people around me, and they just didn't get it. They thought I was faking the previous 20 minutes, and I couldn't get anybody to believe it. That look, I faked that, didn't it? Just a fake. You think I'm lying, don't you? I'm not lying. I felt like the only person on the planet who had ever unlearned how to ride a bike, and I couldn't articulate it to anyone, because everybody just knew that you can't forget how to ride a bike. So I learned three things from this experiment. I learned that welders are often smarter than engineers. I learned that knowledge does not equal understanding, and I learned that truth is truth, no matter what I think about it. So be very careful how you interpret things, because you're looking at the world with a bias, whether you think you are or not. I'm Destin. You get smarter every day. Have a good one. Okay, if you want to support Smarter Every Day, you can download a free audiobook at audible.com/smarter. I recommend Commander Hadfield's book, which is An Astronaut's Guide to Life on Earth. I read it, it was awesome. If you think about it, I had to learn how to ride a different kind of bicycle, and my son did as well, but Commander Hadfield had to learn how to ride a different spaceship. Not only that, but a different type of space station. He was on Mir and the International Space Station. Anyway, if you're interested in supporting Smarter Every Day, audible.com/smarter.
Okay, that concludes what we were going to present to you, and hopefully this last video helps you understand what we've been trying to talk about, that we have to remove our bias, we have to think outside the box for what's going to be best for students, and we look forward to being able to go on this journey with you. So, thank you.
Rob, at what point do you need a decision on if we're going with option two or one?
I believe, you know, September 12th, you can make the decision.
Okay. So, we need to think about that and come back at that board meeting, ready to make a recommendation. So, any other questions or feedback? Appreciate all the effort and time that you and the administrators have put into this, preparing this, and it seems very thoughtful, and we're excited to get going on this 18-month journey. So, Brad, anything else?
No, great, this is very helpful.
Okay, all right. Anything else from the board before we adjourn? Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn the work session and the board meeting, and hopefully we'll see some of you at the Northwest Recreation Center on Thursday at 3:00 PM for the ribbon cutting. Thanks.